I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, November 9th, 2015. We are all at the dais this evening, so we will begin with Councilman Stip and the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, your watchful care reaches from end to end. It orders all things in such power that even the tensions and tragedies of sin cannot frustrate your loving plans. Help us to embrace your will and give us the strength to follow your call. This week in particular, we ask that you keep the men and women serving this nation, both here and abroad, in your protection, and we also give thanks for the courage and strength of those that have already served. Amen.
Thank you. As I said, we're all here present tonight, so we'll go right into the communications. We have two communication items tonight. The first one is an update on the Veterans Day event scheduled for Wednesday, November 11th, 2015, at our Goodyear Park, and David Side Parks and Recreation Manager to present. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to provide an update tonight on the Veterans Day event tribute that will be held this Wednesday, November 11th, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Goodyear Ballpark. Before we get into the planned activities, I do want to take a moment and take a step back on how we got here, so we'll go ahead and review some of the planning that went into the event. Since our earliest planning meetings this past spring, we've been very cognizant of the council goals we had heard at workshops, along with input gathered from Goodyear employee veterans we spoke to in April. This slide highlights some of the major themes we heard during those conversations, and keeping these important factors in mind, we feel we have created an event that the Goodyear community can be proud of. This year's Veterans Day tribute, the focal point will be an interactive flag garden. The interactive flag garden will be have a number of opportunities for those in the community to write a personalized message to anyone in their family that is serving or has served in the military. Flags such as the one I'm holding will give everyone an opportunity to go ahead and show their appreciation to those men and women of the armed forces. The flag garden currently is up, and on your way home this evening, if you do want to take a look at it out at the ballpark, it is lit. We do have about 175 of the mini flags already installed. We had some schoolchildren write some messages, and we've had some other members from the public go ahead and take part in getting that flag garden started. Also, along with the event, we do have lanyards, such as the one I'm holding here, that will help identify all of the veterans in attendance. So upon all those that are coming to the event, if they indicate they're a veteran, we will go ahead and issue one of these. The placard insert will be one that will be particular to their branch of service, and by having them wear these while they're at the event, it'll allow for those in the public and in attendance to recognize them and give thanks for their service. In addition to the lanyards, we will also have thank you cards available. Thank you cards will be given to those who attend and will allow someone to write a personalized message or a generalized one to any soldier that has served, and will allow them to bring that up and kind of melt or break the ice, if you will, if they see a veteran wearing a lanyard and they want to give some appreciation, they can go ahead and give that to those veterans in attendance. In addition, we do have a formal podium ceremony planned for the event that will take place at 3:30 p.m. We have retired Admiral Vernon Clark, who will be the keynote speaker, very distinguished Navy veteran and very accomplished career, and we're very excited to have one of Goodyear's local heroes join us and address us. In addition to those activities, we will have a number of art opportunities. We will have some sidewalk patriotic chalk art on display. We will also have the Goodyear Mobile Museum, and we'll have a number of arts and exhibits for the public to participate and enjoy. We also received word that this semi trailer will actually be joining us, so this is a large visual that we're very proud to have scheduled. It's promoting the U.S. Army, and there's some interactive activities that those interested can participate and take part in. Also, we'll have some patriotic performances. This is Lydellac Crazy, a musical quartet that will sing a number of patriotic songs from the various decades, and I think will add a nice touch to the field flag garden area that we have. This slide details the precise event timeline, so as you can see, the event itself starts at 2:00 p.m., podium portion 3:30, and you can see a number of the timeline activities that are planned with the event concluding at 5:30. Very excited for the number of activities that we have planned. Should have beautiful weather out there, and I think we lucked out with no rain in the forecast. This slide will give us an aerial view, so this wide angle is kind of for a larger reference point, but as we zoom in, I'll go ahead and show the various activities and the event layout itself. So as you can see, we're in the southwest turf parking lot, and you can see the flag garden outlined with 50 large U.S. flags on the north part. Just to the south of that, we will have a tent where we have our podium portion take place. We have approximately 250 chairs set up with the option to add a number of additional chairs. We're hopeful that the crowd will warrant that. Also, you can see a number of the other activities and kind of the basic layout. So as folks enter the event, we will give them an onsite event brochure program, if you will, that will give them the timeline and let them know of the various partners that we do have joining us. We have vendor booths from the five branches of the military, along with a group that is providing a rehab eagle, so we're very excited about them joining us, and it should be a little bit of a draw for all those in attendance. So we've really tried to vary the activities, family-friendly, free event, and we're very excited about this inaugural event this coming Wednesday. With that, I leave you with the last slide, which is our Veterans Day event tribute flyer, and that will conclude my presentation at this time.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? I just want to thank staff for all the work and the preparation they're doing. I was out there today when they were putting the flags up, and I saw the tent, so we're excited to be there and to pay tribute to our veterans, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item is to recognize 18 residents of Goodyear and Litchfield Park who recently completed the community's emergency response team, CERT, training. Othel Nubel, Emergency Manager, to present. It's so nice when you see cities come together to do something like this, so it's terrific. Welcome.
Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor and Council, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to present these 18 individuals that came together for the CERT training. As you all may know, we started in September, finished in October, and what I'd really like to do with your blessing, Tanya Tanner has over the years have taken a much more active role in putting together the CERT classes, so I'm going to allow her to do the presentation if that's okay with you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity. As with Tim said, this was a great group that we had to come together. All 18 didn't make it this time, but what was really interesting is that the 18 who started finished.
Wonderful.
That was a first, and you know, sometimes things happen, or they kind of get in and decide, ah, this really isn't for me. So we did finish with 18 members. And then with that, really with Tim, is being a true leader is, you know, I definitely cannot do this by myself, so even though my team's not here to recognize, I really want to recognize them, because it's really just being able to get things done through others, and I had a lot of others that helped me get this done. So from my instructor staff, Bob Marshall, John Farrell, Darren Green, Janine Van Lewen, and Crazy Renee, I was waiting for that one, because that one was really good with our drill, our final drill. We really threw a lot at this group, and they really just overcome, they really did a great job. Eric Webster brought the PD explorers as our victims, and so what a great group for that was too. Some of our past CERT members came out for that. Sunny Culberth from Litchfield Park came out and helped. We even had an onsite reporter, Mike Sakel, was really onsite reporter, got into their faces, and talk about the no comment, came out really quickly. No comment, no comment. So that was really good. And kind of the behind the scenes too, was PJ Miller. She, it was her first time she didn't make the CERT class, but she made sure she put my books together for me, my handouts for all the participants, so even though y'all thought I was wonderful, I really had a lot of help in this. I'm still wonderful. Make sure of that. Tim has taught me very well, as y'all can tell. So I really want to acknowledge the group that did make it out tonight. Lincoln, he's a, I'm just going to go by first names, because I'll already butcher the last names. He's one of our local pastors, and after that, I'm sure his prayer list grew a lot from that group. Where's Lincoln? Judy, up from Estre Mountain Ranch, so we really had a full showing of all throughout the city, you know, all different neighborhoods. So she's from Estre Mountain Ranch. Jackie, our own employee, who survived and was a huge help of letting me store things too in her area. Palm Valley, Peggy, where's Peggy? From Litchfield Park, a great help there. And we had Tony from Historic Goodyear. Gerald and Katrin Montgomery from Palm Valley Five, excellent group. Jay, and Jay survived. Jay survived with flying colors. Also, Bob from, he's also one of our ham operators, so he's very well-known within our group in the city, from Estre Mountain Ranch. And I saw Claudia walk in. Claudia came on and was aboard, and also Mr. James Dear from Buckeye. We even had Buckeye come out and participate, so it was a really nice showing.
Jackie Mc, let you go so you could come here, huh?
Yeah. So from Canyon Trails to Estre Mountain Ranch to Historic Goodyear, hopefully they never have to use their skills, but we know that as first responders, that they are able and willing, and like I said, the 18 that actually stayed with the group, so my hat's off to you guys. I did a wonderful job.
Well, I know that, we'll give a round of applause. I know that some council might like to say something, so anybody have something they'd like to? Yes, Cheryl Lynn.
Well, I know it is an effort to go, but it's such a learning experience. I had the honor of going through the CERT program successfully, kind of, and the last exercise, they made me the coordinator, because I guess I figured that was the best way to keep me out of their way, and it was a very, but what an interesting learning experience you've just been through, so thank you for your time and your interest in our community. It's a very important step.
Councilwoman Pizzillo.
No, I just want to echo again, thank you for giving of your time and helping the city. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vice Mayor Lortano.
I just want to thank everybody that came out, and you know, obviously this took away from your families and your other activities, but it's really great, and we know our city's in good hands if we ever have a problem, because people like you step up and help out.
Councilwoman Osborne.
Just to thank you, and you know, you're the shining example as to why we know our city is great, and it's because it starts with its people, and you giving your time, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Stip.
You know, from a practical approach from what you've just gone through, in the time that you're, of the emergency, you are going to be there for yourselves and your neighbors when others may not, and I think that that's the really important piece, is that you're not going to be relying necessarily on someone else to come, that you're going to be there and get that work done, and I think that says a lot about your character, and your willingness to help your community and your fellow man, but it is a skill that we hope we never have to use to its fullest degree, but thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
Well, as one of those who graduated from CERT as well, long before I was on council, I'm delighted that you're joining our team. We want to thank you for doing that. My most favorite memory is my part was marking the building, and I got to mark them with snakes, and that was the most fun of all, because there really wasn't one. But thank you all so much for doing this, and I know if we have to call on you, you're going to be ready, and you're going to be working side by side with us and with Tim, and we just thank you very much.
And I echo all the comments made here tonight. My part was, I was always either dead or injured.
Oh, yeah.
So I think the first four years, I was one of the victims, and so I attended quite a few of those graduations, so I know what they went through. So thank you so much. Thanks for your leadership, and we thank you for the program.
So do they want a picture of all of us with them? Do we have a camera to get a picture with all of us?
I don't know. Do we have a camera here?
Okay, so.
All right. I think we, all right, you going to bring them all up?
Maybe we could, here we go again. You only go through CERT once, thank goodness.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I was going, if you.
You want to go right here, and I'm going to go over there. Oh, get out of here.
She's standing on a chair, Wally.
Yeah, I'm going to bring my own stool. Hello. No, y'all are fine. You're fine. This is a standing joke, council, because I'm the shortest one.
Standing joke.
No, a sitting joke. Thank you. I can't believe I did that. Thank you.
Great job.
Dear, thanks. Thank you. Great job. Thank you for all your work. I saw your boys. Yeah. Thanks. You are awesome. I saw that too.
I'm sorry, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Let's go right to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting held on October 26, 2015. Item 6.2, approval request from Carolina Fuentes, owner agent for N.M.C.I. Kids LLC, DBA Mariscos Camarón Palau Restaurant, for a new Series 12 liquor license, number 1207A396, located at 350 North Dyssart Road, Suite 201, generally located on the southwest corner of Dyssart Road and Van Buren Street.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item? All right, then, could I please have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Stip. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Stip.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Aye.
Mayor Lord.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's go to the business agenda, and the first item is to consider the appointments to the Public Safety Retirement Board. Marine Scott, city clerk, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you tonight is to consider the appointment and reappointment to the Public Safety Retirement Board for both police and fire. And the police and fire board have five members. There's a chairman, and that is Councilmember Stip. There are two members who are citizens from our community, and then they serve on both boards, and we also have two elected members that represent the police department, membership, and then two from our fire department. The board meets when needed, and they review new hire applications as well as retirement applications. There are no term limits per statute for these boards, and the terms are for four years. Mr. Stewart has been on the board since 2011, and the council subcommittee recommends for his reappointment to the board. And Mr. Doyle has served on the board since 2003, and he was voted in by his peers with the fire department membership. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, what we're going to do is we'll wait and vote on it, and then we'll bring them up for the pictures and the swearing in. So could I have a motion in a second to reappoint Michael D. Stewart as a citizens' representative to the police and fire public safety personnel retirement boards for a four-year term ending October 31st, 2019? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Holman. Any council discussion? Yes, Councilman Stip.
I just want to, I know Michael's sitting in the audience, but for the rest of the council, both Patrick and Michael are exceptional board members. Patrick, who I saw him here earlier, I must have gotten a call. Oh, he's back there. Patrick's tenure on the board has been very long, but has also been made with the best interests of the city. Patrick is very pragmatic about what we're considering, the long-term implications of pension decisions, and has made some very difficult choices as a board member, so I want to thank and acknowledge the council subcommittee for a great job on recognizing that and selecting these two to return.
We appreciate that very much. Any other comments? So we'll vote on this one, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Could I then have a motion in a second to reappoint Patrick Doyle as the person, as the fire personnel representative to the fire public safety personnel retirement board for a four-year term ending October 31st, 2019? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Osborne. All right, open for council discussion. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Will the city clerk please invite them up and to give the oath of loyalty?
Please hold up your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Michael Stewart.
To solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of PSRS board member.
Of PSRS.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Gentlemen, thank you for your service. We greatly appreciate it. All right, let's go to 7.2, is to consider a construction contract for the police operations facility. Regis Reed, project manager, to present. We haven't seen you in a while, Regis. It's nice to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor. Members of the council. It's a pleasure to bring you this evening, the GMP1 for the construction contract for the new public safety police operations facility. In October of 2014, staff and procurement advertised and requested qualifications for firms to do a CMRIS contract. This contract holds two parts. The first part is the design portion of it, in which they assist our design consultant in the design and managing budget and constructability reviews. Part two is the contract we have before you this evening, which is the actual construction contract to construct the building we designed. A little background on the project and where we are with designing what they're going to build for us. The site is currently located just south of the Goodyear Municipal Complex, the complex we're in. It'll be comprised of 20,910 square feet and sits on approximately four acres of site. It will have two accesses, one to 145th Avenue and one to 143rd Avenue, for the secure police department to use in our secure parking area. The main entrance to the building will be off of 145th Avenue, and we will be adding to the parking lot, the existing parking lot to the south, for public parking to have to do business with the police department. This is the rendering of the police department as it is going to look. We've taken into consideration during the design process to make it accommodate the materials used at the existing Goodyear Municipal Complex, using the founders' red and brown block, stucco, the window frames, things to match, to enhance and be cohesive with the existing municipal complex we have now. Again, the floor plan is approximately 20,910 square feet. It will house all the specific areas to accommodate the police department, the uniformed police department, to conduct their daily duties. The main lobby will be large enough to act as a breakout room for our community room. It will house a restroom facility, breakout meeting rooms for the citizens and personnel or citizens to come and conduct business with the police department. Off that lobby, we'll have a records division with a transaction window. It will house all of our record staff and public safety records, where citizens come and request records and receive them. It will have a receptionist window also, where people are greeted when they come to the lobby and conduct business with the police department. It will house a briefing room, where police officers will conduct their daily briefings before their day shift, swing shift, and graveyard shifts. They'll receive pertinent information before they hit the streets on their daily shifts. This area will also be able to be utilized for training facilities for the interdepartmental agencies and then the police department themselves. Our community room will be utilized for police briefing outreach programs to the community. It can be used as intergovernmental other agency training and just general community, police community services for meetings. There'll be a holding facility. This facility will be used to process the arrestees and hold them while that processing is going on. They will either be released from this facility through a release lobby that we have that's also going to house our tow lobby to conduct our impound vehicle releases, and it's going to be a separate lobby from the general main public lobby. Off of the facility will house things like the DUI, intoxicizers, the booking, photographs, fingerprinting, things like this, to conduct the processing of the arrestees and in custody. They can be either released out of this tow lobby or transported to the Miracopa County Jail facility. Attached to the holding facility is a Sally Port. This area will be utilized to safely transfer the prisoners or the arrestees from the police vehicle into the holding facility while they're being booked, and then back out to the police vehicles to be transported to Miracopa County holding facilities. There'll be a gymnasium-style fitness center. It will house elliptical equipment, cardio equipment, weights, free weights, and mats for stretching, and just to assist the officers in keeping generally fit so they can more safely perform their daily duties. Off of the fitness center will be a locker room for changing in and out of their service duties and workout equipment, along with a restroom facility with showers for the officers. Off of the facility will house things like the DUI, intoxicizers, the booking, photographs, fingerprinting, things like this, to conduct the processing of the arrestees and in-custodies. They can be either released out of this tow lobby or transported to the Miracopa County Jail Facility. Attached to the holding facility is a Sallyport. This area will be utilized to safely transfer the prisoners or the arrestees from the police vehicle into the holding facility while they're being booked, and then back out to the police vehicles to be transported to Miracopa County holding facilities. There'll be a gymnasium-style fitness center. It will house elliptical equipment, cardio equipment, weights, free weights, and mats for stretching, and just to assist the officers in keeping generally fit so they can more safely perform their daily duties. Off of the fitness center will be a locker room for changing in and out of their service duties and workout equipment, along with a restroom facility with showers for the officers.
Do you have a pointer, because it won't download on our computers, and we can't really see what you're talking about?
You can't get it on the computer?
None of us can download.
I got, I must have the best one. I got it. So you got it?
No. None of us can download.
Okay.
Okay, now I did it. See, you go and ask me something.
So, okay, I'll ask that question when you're done. Never mind.
Now I can't get anything back. And that didn't work. Oh, bro.
Yeah, I get your credit three times. Thank you.
I can assist with the design of $103 million Paul Park in this facility, but I'm technically challenged to do something like this on a computer. I apologize.
Did you have a question?
I'm not sure why. There we go. Are you able to see? This area right here is the Sallyport I was just telling you about for the transfer of the vehicles.
It's bigger there, guys.
This entire area right up here is the holding processing area for the in-custodies and the arrestees.
How many does that hold?
How many cells are we down?
There's currently 12 cells. There'll be two juvenile cells and 11, I'm sorry, two juvenile cells, nine regular cells, and a large cell for housing multiple prisoners and multiple in-custodies at a time.
Okay.
All the facilities totally secure, have entry vestibles to where when you enter the facility, the door coming in has to be closed, but if the doors into the facility can be opened. A completely secure facility. The community room, this is the main entrance right here, and the community room is just off that entrance with a separate outside exit and entrance. The lobby is this large purple-colored area here. Again, it'll be connected with an access directly from the community room for breakout areas. This is the restroom facility I'm speaking of, and these rooms right here are the breakout conference rooms, meeting rooms for an officer to take a report, do some fingerprinting, things like that for non-in-custodies. The records division is this area right here. There'll be a transaction window off the lobby right in this area here. This will house the high-density shelving for the records, and this houses the staff work areas for the record staff to work out of. This little area right here, white, is actually the receptionist office, and it's where they will house a receptionist to handle, when they're open for business, to handle, conduct the business for the citizens to the Police Department. This area right here is the gymnasium we were talking about, the Workout Fitness Center, and again is adjacent to a men's locker room and shower facility and a women's locker room and shower facility right there. These are two small conference rooms, breakout rooms for the Police Department to use for small meetings. This is a larger conference room for them to use in larger meetings and training rooms. This is a sergeant's bullpen area, where the sergeants will be housed, patrol sergeants, uniformed patrol sergeants. The offices along this north wall here are lieutenant's offices for the patrol lieutenants to be housed. This area right here is an evidence transfer. We have one down at the newly constructed, was a few years ago, evidence building, and we're putting an evidence transfer here where the officers come in while they're doing their booking and doing their daily conducting business. The Police Department, they can actually book their evidence into custody there, and then our evidence staff would come to this area, pick it up, and transfer it down to the actual evidence building. The briefing room I'm speaking of is right here, and it's a tiered briefing room. It'll have three levels in it, the main level you walk in, and two elevated levels, so when they're being briefed by the patrol sergeant or any training going on, the people in the audience are elevated up as to view and see what's going on on the stage in front of them. This little area right here is the armory. It's where, or it's, I'm sorry, not armory. I'm sorry, it's the quartermasters. This is where the Police Department will distribute and house specialty equipment for the police officers' use and all their daily supplies. There'll actually be a transaction window in the hall as they go out that backyard of their patrol units for the shift. This gray area right here is the break room. It'll house kitchen facilities for them to prepare their meals, warm them up, heat them, and take their breaks and have their lunch in. The section right here in blue and green, this is the traffic division. It'll house a special area for the patrol officers, the traffic motorcycles to bring in and temporarily store their vehicles if they need to. It'll also house a training area and storage for the traffic division to store specialty equipment used in investigations and things like that. We have a canine division. These are three indoor/outdoor canine kennels, to where when the officer's in, writing reports or doing something, they take their canines out of their vehicles, bring them into an air-conditioned space, and not have to worry about them being in the vehicle the whole time. It's also going to have a bathing facility so that they can bathe their canines within this facility and store their dog foods and other materials they need for the canine. There's also a storage area in here for the special training equipment they use, small explosives, small narcotics, things like that they use to work with their canines. It'll be housed in the same area. This area right here, I had talked to you about a tow release lobby. In red there is where they'll actually conduct a transaction window where they conduct the tow hearings to release vehicles back to the public that were impounded. It'll also, it's also adjacent to the holding facility, which is right here. This is a secure vestibule, so if they have an arrestee that they can actually release, or in juvenile release, they can come out and be released through this lobby and go out to there without being near the main public police entrance to the lobby. It's about the crux of what we got there. It's got just, for Uniform Patrol Division, it's got every asset, everything they need to conduct their daily business. This is just a brief summary of our construction schedule, giving you an overview of what kind of activities may be going on for the next year here, with the approval tonight of this construction contract. We'll be breaking ground towards the end of the month, just out there's mobilizing, setting up construction trailers, and starting next, actually site grading and whatnot. If you look down through there, it gives you the crux of the main activities that may be going on month by month through November of next year, when they will be completing the project, and the Police Department will be moving in in December of 2016. Just a little background on the original budget. The fiscal year 15 through 25 CIP program had budgeted this Police Department as follows. In '15, we had $3,950,000. In 2016, we had $3,070,139,000, which gives us a total amount due and available right now for construction, design, and all aspects we need to do, of $7,020,139. At this time, through design contracts and the first part of the construction manager at risk contract, we've expended or committed $1844,279, which leaves us availability of $5,175,842 for this construction contract. Construction contract before you this evening is for $4,650,000. That was the best place to break off the construction contract between the phases that need to happen right now and the phases that will happen after July of 2016, when the remaining $750,000 is available, and we can complete the $5.4 million construction for Basically, then, at this point in time, we'd ask for recommendations to approve our contract.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then could I have a motion a second to approve the budgeted expenditures in the amount of $4,650,000 to construct project number FA1404, the Police Operations Facilities? Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Laura Tano and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for discussion. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Laura Tano.
I just think this is really overdue, and it looks great, and I'm very excited to get that started for our Police Department.
You remember hearing this when we were doing the city center, didn't we? Okay. Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You hit upon a few of my questions, and I thoroughly agree with Vice Mayor Laura Tano. This has been a very badly needed, very exciting time for our city to be in to finally have this project going forward. But on the question of money, I just want to clarify something. So, you know, I could not open our presentation piece, so I read the contract, and, well, went through most of the contract. And I just was, I guess, I shouldn't say concerned, but just help me understand, it does look like you've gone through a great deal of value engineering to really hone in on a lot of specific price points. But I did notice that it said the owner is to carry the contingency, which is us, and it's only at $30,000, and I was a little concerned that that was really low. And so can you help me with that piece?
Absolutely. Councilmember Osborne, the contingency is so little at this time. We have a GMP number two that's going to be coming at you. We'll be carrying most of the contingency. We're, a lot of value engineering went into this. We've still got some project savings we're looking to achieve that are outside of the construction budget, some savings potentially in permitting process, some in the possibly furniture process. We broke out all the budgets individually for each individual item for this to make sure we covered everything, and any savings we have from those other items, the permitting, the furniture, things like that, will contribute towards the construction contract in favor for the GMP number two that'll come to you in July. And at that point in time, the larger owner's contingency will be included at that time. We feel very secure in working, we've worked through the entire contractor, the entire budget with DL Withers, our contractor, to, we didn't just do phase one, we just broke phase one out, or this portion of it out, because we didn't have all the monies available to issue the entire contract. But we're very confident with, in fact, we're positive that there's going to be any issues at all, giving the department everything they needed and most of what they wanted. It was scoped in and added in a little after our scoping of the project initially. So we're just, we're confident we're going to be able to bring a lot of the items, you saw value engineered out, some of the items, and we're confident that we will have a larger contingency in GMP two to close the project out and finish it.
And that's why, the reason for GMP two is because of the way the year has had to break up the financing of this whole project, correct? Is that what?
That is correct. We can't interrupt a contract unless the monies are budgeted and readily available for that fiscal year, so we have to wait to do it. And July of '16, we'll be back before you again, and hopefully I can work the technical skills up here better.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Again, just to piggyback on, Councilmember previously have stated that I appreciate all the effort in here, but I got a quick question for the chief, just for the record. I already know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Chief, you're the one that's going to be staying in this building. Are you pleased with all the pieces that we just went over and was presented to us that meet your need as a department?
We're very pleased, and I can't thank mayor and council and city management enough for this opportunity. This is something that's been needed for a long time, and we thank you so much. Obviously, this is phase one of two. There will be some of the functions, including administration, that will not be in this building, but we are very thankful.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Campbell?
Chief, don't leave. Sorry, I was just going to put my hand up real quick. May I ask my question?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. Is it our intention as a city to have everyone housed with the second phase of your building, or are we always going to have our patrol somewhere else?
No, obviously, the desire, my desire would be to have the entire Police Department, with the exception of evidence under one roof. So after phase two, we would accomplish that, and that will be the way we will be for many, many years, until there comes a time when we need to look for a substation or something maybe on the west side of Goodyear.
All right, and with the design of the building, has this building been designed that we can go up another story if we need to do that?
Councilmember Campbell, absolutely. We didn't design the building to go a story above this one. Our architect was tasked with making sure that when we built this and designed this building, the second phase that would house the Investigations Division, the Administration Division, and all their other non-sworn citizens or non-sworn employees would be able to house here. We designed this, and if I can go back, I can show you something that's built right in the design on this. It's gone completely. Why'd you do that? Right here off the main lobby, you'll see three small offices. Right now, one of those is going to act as a breakout meeting room, but we're actually going to put in the mechanisms to put an elevator in that, and that will be the lobby elevator that'll take you to the second floor. Second floor of this building, the expansion of the building with the second floor will tie directly to this building right here and come south off of this. So again, with the design of this building, we've already made provisions, the elevator shaft, things will be put in, this phase of this building, so it's very non-disruptive to the actual operations of the building we built phase two. The design team did a great job with assistance of the Police Department and their input on how we can best move forward with this. So to answer your question, absolutely designed to expand and incorporate the future phase two of the project.
Looking out maybe 20, 25 years? If that council that is sitting here wishes to go up even higher, I would not want us to have not designed them to have that ability if they so choose, because I'm not sure they'll be doing the same design guidelines we are today. And I just want to be sure that the Police Department could grow if they needed to, which we hope they will, because they've got to grow if we get more residents.
The patrol division of this, the Police Department, this is strictly what we've got here before you this evening, is for the Uniform Patrol Division. This is actually designed to be through the year 2035, without any expansion needed. And working with the Police Department, they've pretty much identified that if we get to that size, again, as the chief identified, there'll be substations that'll house those officers for this particular facility. We don't anticipate that main one being much larger than that.
And that's your 20-year plan?
Yes.
Okay. And Chief, do you feel that you have enough holding cells and enough room? I know from my ride-alongs and how we've gone from building to building to building, and I just want to be sure that we're doing it right the first time?
We are, and actually, we've taken into consideration our growth, obviously. We have extra holding cells built in that won't be operational for day one. It will be pre-plumb, pre-wired, and just available for our use in the future. We have things like a video conferencing room. That, again, won't be operational. We really won't need that for many years, but when the time comes, we'll be able to hold video hearings and whatnot with the judge directly in our facility without taking prisoners out. So we have looked for things to allow us to grow into the future in this building.
Well, that's good, because, you know, technology is here, and I think that it's going to come a lot quicker than perhaps we want it to, and we need to be ready, because it's going to be a huge expenditure for this city. I'm really thrilled to see this, because this was one of the recommendations from the Public Safety Committee that I sat on many, many years ago, and I have contacted all of the living members of our committee who are very excited to know that we're finally going to be able to see a police station built in our city. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Well, I'm also pleased for the police to get this building. It has been, I sat with them in 2005 when they really thought that they were going to build that soon, and I thought we were going to build the city center, and the city center went away, and so, see, this is probably good, the city center went away so we could get this infrastructure, which we definitely need for the safety of our police force and, of course, our citizens. So, Regis, thanks. Good job. Looking forward to seeing it. Thank you. Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go on to 7.3, is to consider a master plat for Cantomea Phase Two and Three and a final citizens. So, Regis, thanks, good job. Looking forward to seeing it. Thank you. Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go on to 7.3, is to consider a master plat for Cantomea Phase Two and Three and a final plat for Cantomea Pod Four. This item will be next, and then the sewer line easement will be the last. So, we've kind of switched it around. So, I thought, I see you caught me right. Did you notice they're right there telling me I was doing the wrong one? Thank you, Bill. I should have explained that beforehand. So, okay, so Alex Lestinsky, planner one to present. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I'm so happy to be here presenting this final plat to you finally. This plat is for phases two and three of Cantomea. Phase two is within this black line, phase three up top. Within this plat is also the final plat for Pod Four, which is this little area down here. The preliminary plat for this, for Cantomea was approved December 14, 2014. The future phases, phase two and three, are divided into different groups of parcels, which are the pods. So, you'll have, you'll see Pod Four, Five, Six, and on. The first pod, as I mentioned, was Pod Four, consisting of parcels 15, 16, 17, and 19, which includes 169 lots over the 48 acres. There will be the access of 178th Avenue and 181st Avenue. Response time for the fire station 182, which is up north in Australia Mountain Ranch, is about 3.8 miles and six to eight response minute, six to eight minute response time, excuse me. And after review, the final plat is consistent with the PAD, the preliminary plat, engineering standards subdivision regulation, and we recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Could I have a motion a second to approve the master plat for the Cantomea Phase Two and Three, subdividing 326.70 acres into two phases and three tracks? Includes the final plat for Pod Four, which is 47.67 acres subdivided into 169 single-family lots and 33 tracks generally located southwest of the Australia Parkway and southeast of Willis Road, within the Australia Mountain Ranch villages, 10 planned area development pads, subject to stipulations set forth in the notes of the final plat and the additional stipulations. Do I hear, so you don't want us to do a motion on this one? Oh, it's not on here. So, could I have a motion in a second, please?
No move.
Second. Our motion from Councilwoman Campbell and a second one from Vice Mayor Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Stip.
Alex, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer this or not. But if I remember correctly, the initial development agreement for this whole area, there was a trigger put in that for the construction of the fire station. And I know in our CIP, it doesn't show up until like 2021, I think. But I think we're going to exceed the rooftops, so can somebody bridge that gap for me?
Of course, thank you. I believe...
Or we can do it later.
Thank you for your question.
No problem. I just don't remember what the trigger was.
Yeah, I believe that the trigger with the development agreement was 600 rooftops. And I know we've been talking with the Newland communities and also talking with, with finance to, you know, certainly, as growth continues down in this area, we'll certainly pay for the revenues to run that station and also to help build that station through the, through the impact fees. I'm not, I can provide further follow-up on the status of that development agreement. I'm not sure exactly where that sits right now between the Newland and the city.
Yeah, if we could, and if, if the number is 600 or whatever the number is, can we get a count on where we're currently at and what phase two and phase three, and as, we'll do for that as well?
I think along with that, you'd want what's in the impact fees, I mean, where we are in, as far as that goes, as to...
Well, yeah, we've either entered into a development agreement that is not able to sustain what it actually promises, or we're behind in what we're anticipating, I mean, or we're right on target. I mean, we've got, obviously, three options, but the, the distance to the property from Fire Station 182 is fairly long, and then the access to this particular development, if you just look at the street layout, this was the same response time problems that we had with Pebble Creek, to be honest with you, with the circular streets. And there's only a couple of limited access points on the way in. So, again, I'm just, I'd like to have all the rest of those details.
We do, the response times, we ran, we've been tracking the call volume in that area for the last year. And so, this is really our first quarter to be able to compare quarter to quarter, and so we're seeing an obvious increase in call volume down there. And we also ran the average response time for that area, and it's about 8:49 right now for calls in that area.
Refresh me then on the triggers that you guys came up with outside of the development agreement.
Yep, so eight minutes or more, 30% of the call volume.
That's what I thought, okay.
The development's six miles away from our current station, and the calls were 500 a year. And right now, we're, last quarter, we did 41 calls. So, you know, over, over four quarters, we're treading, you know, towards that 500 number, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yes. Councilwoman Osborne.
Thank you. Alex, I had two questions. One of, one of the, one of the changes was the buffering around the water treatment facility. I think it was from 1,000 to 350 or something in that nature. What is our usual buffer around these facilities? Is that... Go ahead.
Thank you. I believe it is 1,000. If there are, I'm sorry, I might have to get some help here. If there are any noise control...
Mayor and council, it's 1,000 feet when there's no odor control installed on the plant, and it drops to 350 feet when odor control is installed. There's an odor control easement on the property right now that would preclude the development of the single-family homes in the Phase Two Pod Eight or Six, until those have been installed.
Can I answer your question? Do you understand?
Yes, and thank you. And then, my final question was between Phase One and Phase Three, that land area is, is this the area that, that heads out to the wildlife corridor? Because I couldn't find it on the mapping anywhere, and it may not be this area at all, but I just recall having a problem with this area sometime in the past.
Councilmember Osborne, that wildlife area you were talking about is up at the north end by Pod Nine.
Right, okay.
Pod Nine?
And the plat, actually, for that portion is not, is just a block plat with not, without individual lots at this time. So, the only thing that's being final platted into individual lots is what Alex had pointed out at the south end in Pod Four.
So, but do we even know what this, that one area is within Phase One? That land, open, open space land that's in between? It, it looks like there's ponds or something, I don't know what it's supposed to be, between, between Phase One and Three? No, there's, there's a...
Green vault. The blue ones?
Right there, yes, yes. Alex, I think you're pointing, what is that? Is that just open space retention?
Those are the lakes and running water that is at the entrance to the...
The feature, okay.
It's a water feature.
Gotcha, thank you.
I tell you, while I wait until we, any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilwoman Campbell.
If I understand the staff report correctly, they're asking us to approve the master plan, which will be for 169 single-family homes. And the first Phase One was 100 and, gosh, I can't remember the number. So, by approving this, we're still going to be under 300 homes in Cantomea at this point. Is that correct, Joe? Because this is 169 for Phase Two and Three.
Well, the 169 are, is for this area right here, and this Phase One area has already been platted.
Phase One's already done?
Yes.
Well, Bill was asking how many homes are up there, and I was just trying to help us get a handle on, it's not built out, it's not close to building out, but by doing this 169, and I, I don't believe Phase One was 150 homes, if I remember right.
Councilwoman Campbell, I apologize, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
I can't remember, I'm sorry, it's been a long time since I've been up there.
But I would presume it's several hundred homes that was in the Phase One.
That are up there, okay. All right. But this is no more than 150, 1, yeah, 169. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bazillo? I thought it was you. Councilman, Councilman Stip?
Yep, Councilmember Campbell, I just wanted to, my very foggy recollection is the development agreement is not just for Cantomea.
Oh.
So...
You think it's for Newland as well?
I, I think it's for a section in that southern area. So, that was, that was the genesis of my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We can get an answer from later, but I just wanted some, to give you some clarity on that.
Yeah, thank you.
We can get that later.
I think we have an answer right here, Roy.
It is, it is, it's based on a road alignment. It's 600 housing units south of, and I can't remember what the road is.
Right.
South of Pecos?
500 dwelling units south of Pecos.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's, again, it's not just Cantomea, and that was...
No, but Newland is building now Pecos North. He's doing Phase 11 and Nine and all of those.
Pecos road alignment is, runs along the bottom of Cantomea.
Yeah, over the very bottom.
Right. Oh, so maybe it wasn't Pecos, maybe it was Ray Road.
I don't think it's Pecos.
It was Ray Road.
Yeah, Pecos doesn't sound right, I think.
Yeah, that's right. It's Ray Road, which is further north.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But we'll have to get that information back to you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bazillo?
No, just, as Councilmember Stip has mentioned, I think what is really interesting, and again, I'll be curious when we get that feedback, is, and I realize we've got development fees that cover the building, what I'm more concerned is the 1.5, if we got to open it. That, to me, is a greater concern, because that's operational, day-to-day money. So, that, to me, is what's critical when we find out, when we hit that threshold, because that's quite a demand on the system if we got to come up with 1.5 million operating, so.
Vice Mayor Laura Tano?
I, I think it'd be great to get some of the numbers as well, because I know that's really important, and for another reason, not just for the infrastructure, is we really do need density up there. The residents are literally, I don't want to say screaming, but they want amenities up there, and we need the rooftops. So, I would like to know how many are coming when people ask.
You mean the people in the lower part or upper part?
All of it up there. Nothing's coming up there until we get more rooftops.
They're asking for another park? What are they?
Well, just restaurants, just...
Oh, restaurant, oh, yeah, well.
I mean, they're, but we need, even in Cantomea, even if it's further south.
Yeah, I can understand that, and I know there are community, there is, there are plats up there for a shopping center further up, further south, that I remember seeing early on in this development. And I can appreciate everybody, residents wanting all that, but I think we need to be patient, again. I will tell you, I think Cantomea is beautiful. It's well-designed, I've been up there a couple of times, looked around, is, the people are, well, in fact, a couple of the people have come to some of the events lately. They came to my, to the State of the City, and they were going on and on and on, what a super place they live in. And I've been up there several times and toured it and toured some of the homes, and it is, it is pretty fantastic. I can understand your concern, and I understand the concern of the fire department. And so, we need to watch those triggers, but we need to be realistic to the people, okay? Look how long it took to get the shopping center where you are. It doesn't happen overnight, and we only have so much control over that. It's controlled by the developer, and the people want to invest.
I, I'm sorry, I think what I was saying is I'm glad to see more houses up there. I'd like to know how much are up there, because that is going to draw more development as we get more houses.
Oh, well, there's, have you been up there lately?
Yeah.
Okay, there's quite a few houses coming, so, you're right, you're right, I agree with you.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
I misunderstood your point, so.
No, I, I think this is a good thing, because, and I'd like to be able to tell people how many more houses are coming, because I think that's a very positive, because that will draw the development and the density we need up there.
Yeah, so maybe the, we can find that out, and, yes, Brian?
Yes, Mayor, listening to some of the conversation, there are a couple of information deliverables. One is, is we'll get council the information on what the triggers are for the fire station or agreement with Newland, what that looks like, when that could potentially be funded, going back to several points that, so we will be getting that back to you. The other is more information on the first, the Phase One of Cantomea, how many homes are actually plotted as part of that. So, those are two of the points. The other is, we do have a report that goes out, that went out the last three years, that shows kind of general areas where permits are happening. We can certainly go into more detail on that if that's desired by council.
Yeah, I guess we need to pay attention to that. I can understand the council's concerns, so, and get the information to them, I think it'd be helpful. And Alex, I know you haven't been up here very many times during your presentation. Is this your first, or how many times you're done?
I believe it's my third.
Your third, well, thank you very much. It gets easier each time, and we appreciate your effort. Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go to, just a moment, I have a tear in my eye and I can't read a second. Okay, the last item in business is to consider the sewer line in Cantomea. Oh, we haven't voted yet, thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Bill. All right, the last item is to consider a sewer line easement in Cantomea. Lynda Beals, real estate coordinator, will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Lord, and council members. My name is Lynda Beals, I am the real estate coordinator here at the City of Goodyear. Tonight, I'm here kind of backing on, into the same subdivision as Alex. Tonight, one of the, the item that I'm working on is the abandonment of a, of portions of the sewer easement that was dedicated to the city in 2007. That sewer easement, where it goes from the water treatment facility over on this edge and then wanders down through, and then currently serves the Phase One portion of the Cantomea development. As they came in and did the final lotting design for Phase Two Pod Four, which is what, one of the items that you approved tonight, the sewer easement actually ended up going through some of the lots that they were, that they were plating out on this plat. So, that they came to us and said, we need to abandon portions, and when we'll be actually granting the areas through the streets that they need to get back through there. It does require them to do some actual relocation of the physical lines. So, what they're coming in to do is they will be relocating those lines that would be impacting lots. They'll be doing that prior, obviously, to moving forward with the development of the actual lots themselves and building of the homes. But tonight, what we're, we're looking for is an approval of the portions that they have gone in and platted this evening. They are leaving portions intact, and I did bring the same item that Alex just showed you a minute ago, the portions that go up through this area, those areas will be left intact for now. They may end up being relocated later as they plat out those areas of lots. But tonight, what we're recommending the approval on is the, that want, it's, it is a, the, this approval is a, it, it's authorizing us to execute the release once they've met certain conditions. It's a conditional approval. And the conditions at this point are that we will have to have the approval, acceptance, and recordation of the master plat. So, tonight, we met that first standard, that, that they have to have approval. But then, they will also have to do the recordation of that prior to this occurring. They will also need to actually abandon or remove the portions of the lines that are currently in operation. the lines that are currently in operation, but before they can do that, they actually have to put the new lines in place. So once they've met all of those criteria, they've built the new lines, switched the existing sewer onto the new lines, gotten rid of the old lines, and we've managed, and we have an approval and a recordation of this current plat, then we'll be able to actually file the release and termination document for the abandonment. But what you're approving tonight is you're giving us that authorization that once those conditions are met, we'll be able to go ahead and release and terminate that, that portion of the sewer line that will no longer be needed. That pretty much wraps up my presentation for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1730 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1730, conditionally abandoning portions of a sewer line easement dedicated to and accepted by the city in February of 2007, authorizing execution of release and termination agreement and other documents as may be needed, authorizing non-substantive changes to release and termination agreement by city attorney, authorizing recordation of release and termination, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second?
Some move.
Second.
I heard Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Stip, open for council discussion? No discussion? Just curious on the timeframe of all this.
I'm not entirely certain of how long it'll take them. I know they're underway, I mean, they want to move the sewer line along as quickly as possible, because, and it'll be one of the first things they do, just because they need to get that done in order to move forward with a lot of the other work.
Thank you. All right, let's go for the vote. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Basile?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Laura Towne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Well, now we're down to the information items. Does council have any comments or recommendation reports to give tonight?
I'd like to.
Councilwoman Stip?
You know, I've been on the council for five years, and I still don't have this down. Is this the part where we just talk about what we did, and then we ask questions later?
What, you got, I don't know, what's your, what questions you want to ask?
Well, no, if, if I went to the groundbreaking of XYZ, this is where I say it. But if I have a question or something for staff or comments later, then we'll do, all right, then I'm not on till later.
Then I ask you, does the city manager have anything to report, or do you have anything to report to the city manager, so? Because number four is, does council have any inquiries to staff after the city manager was in? Got that? Is that, is that all, sure? Yeah, Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know that we all heard the great news about our city and, and its ranking within the nation, and, you know, I'm just, I'm so very pleased that we all know that it's, it's great citizens and businesses and developers, but I just really wanted to say thank you to our staff and to our management and for working hard to, to bring this city to where it is today, and, and it's really exciting, even though it's, it's, some people say, oh, it's not a big deal, and others will just, you know what, back to that perception, and the way that it is on social media, it is a big deal. And, and I know that it takes a lot of hard work, and I, I'm thankful to the staff for doing it.
Yes, any other comments? Councilman, no, okay, all right, now let's, does the city manager have any things to report to us, and of course, follow up?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, real briefly, we did have a presentation on Veterans Day, but just as a reminder, our city offices are actually closed that day, even though we have the event going on out at the ballpark. Couple of things, and I can provide it in my weekly update to council as far as additional details, but the gain event that there was this past Saturday, that where we had an opportunity at two or eight neighborhoods, and there were a total of 11 neighborhoods that actually held a gain event in Goodyear this past Saturday. And we'll give you information on the Third Annual Special Olympics at the Goodyear Ballpark that was Saturday, a very successful event there as well. The other one, and very topical, we're doing four pavement management projects in the fall, and they start this week, so we're, if, we're working very hard to get the information out to the citizens in advance, but there are all, four different areas of Goodyear that will be going on this fall. So we'll get more information on that as well. I do want to just hit, and it was Councilmember Campbell that had the opportunity to receive this, I'm going to hold it up. We received an award, and it is the 2015 Digital Cities Award, City of Goodyear. So we got 10th place in the country, up to 75,000 population. And just to put that in perspective, it focuses on 10 initiatives in four categories, it's citizen engagement, it's policy, which of course is set by council, operations, technology, and data. So Goodyear was specifically recognized for a lot of work on our online crime data, new utility customers, incident reporting, visual upgrades, our public meetings online, digital signage on bulletin boards throughout the community. And the other is, we think it's truly a testament to council setting strategic planning efforts, because when we get this direction, the policy direction, that's a big part of what goes into this award. But I would say lastly, we have come a long way from a couple of years ago, and for us to have our technology be recognized, I would tell you, two and a half years ago that would not have happened. So special thanks to Dan Cotterman's staff, and especially for council for the policy directions. So, congratulations. Mayor, council, for the best of the West, and we did get honorable mention in a couple areas, EJM, over their $6 million investment on 143rd Avenue, was recognized in the Economic Engine category, and the Water Division of Public Work was recognized, and that was honorable mention for this one as well, for the Vados Well Injection, and that's in the Innovation category. But probably one of the most fun parts of this, when Ron Jones stood up to present one of the award categories, he proudly said, and Sub-Zero is in Goodyear, and it's great to be the seventh best city to live in in the United States, and there were a heck of a lot of applause that went on during that, that comment. Mayor and council, the last item I have, and if you have an opportunity to engage with the police department, this, on November 14th, from 11 to 2, our PD will be working with Wildflower on a partnership, if you will, Wildflower Bread Company for a toy drive at 1380 North Litchfield Road in Goodyear. And this is for Operation Christmas Child, which is run by Samaritan's Purse Organization, a non-denominational faith-based organization. And it sends presents to kids throughout the world, can't be bigger than a shoebox, but over 124 million presents have gone nationwide since 1970, and our police has chosen to partner with Wildflower on that. So those were some, some good things going on, and we are trying to continue to work on that, getting out the number seven in the country, and really what, what that means to us. And quite frankly, the areas that we were, that were evaluated, when you think about it, it's economy, crime, education, housing, environment, leisure, infrastructure, and health. Those are the areas where we were graded upon that gave us that ranking. So, Mayor and council, that's all I have in terms of information updates.
I think I'll just add to that, because the Business Summit was very successful. Michelle, great job, and the staff, great job. It was well, well done, good speakers. How many people totally came to that? 105. And I, the other night I was out, and I got more responses about it. They said it was the best, and you can see that we have elevated it every year, and this year the speakers were just outstanding. So I just want to mention that. And then, of course, Wildflower, again, Elementary School, won the canned food drive, and so we presented a trophy to them, they were so excited about that. And then the Chamber Board of Directors, Southwest Chamber Board of Directors, met and greeted the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, they came together at the Cancer Treatment Centers of America. I just wanted to mention that too. And then, it would be nice if, if some of you, if you weren't able to go, Dr., the professor at the Estrela Mountain College, Dr. Laura Lara, what is his last name? Lara, had his opening of the Performing Arts Center, and they did two events. They did a ribbon cutting, and they had entertainment, they did a performance, a dance performance, and then they had a VIP thing in the evening where they had more over a play that they performed, and it was very well done. So I encourage all of you to go over and take a look at it, it's absolutely a beautiful, beautiful theater. So, that's it, and before I adjourn, and we go to a special meeting, the next work session and regular meeting will be November 16th, 2015. Yes, Bill? Oh, yes, go, Bill.
That's why I was always so confused by it.
Just keep reminding me.
The manager, you know, usually does this, and this is what I heard, I need to follow up on, and then he already does that, and now we.
I, it was me, Bill.
No, it's me.
You're not, you're not in Arica.
All right, so, I've got two, I think, two follow-ups from, from last week that I'm just curious when we're going to hear back on. First, and it's technically three, we did get the budget detail on the Goodyear Municipal Complex Projects, which I greatly appreciate. It, you know, revealed exactly what we had talked about that night, which was all the projects in their totality have, you know, remained within budget, so I greatly appreciate that. The other thing that we talked about that night was the CIP Contingency Fund that we talked about during transfers, there was a, you were going to work on getting a balance for us on that. That was the other, the other part of that. And then what came up last week was the, comment was made about businesses not locating in Goodyear because of actions of the council. And I don't recall seeing that in the pipeline reports that we get from you monthly. Seen education being an issue, I've seen location, I've seen water, not seen the report that said it's because of the actions of council that businesses aren't locating here. So if I can get the information on that, I would be curious. That comment was made last week during the council meeting, that actions of this council have caused businesses not to come, and I'm curious about that, because I'm not, I looked through all my stuff, and I haven't been able to find that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Stip, that it would not, that has not been in the pipeline report, so that has not been communicated that way. We can certainly look into where, what information that includes.
Okay, that'd be perfect. And then finally, and I, this is kind of a very generic and open-ended statement, I guess. Last week we heard a presentation from Kim Bradford on the Performance Measurement, the Lean, and the Strategic Plan. Kim did an outstanding job, and last week during the meeting, I failed to mention that. I reached out to Kim via email, expressed my appreciation for a job well done. As the manager pointed out tonight, the strategic plan is really very important for, for staff to drive, driving forward. And in doing that, and looking at that, I kind of, I didn't kind of, I did have an epiphany of sorts flying back on Friday from a, because I left here, we had our meeting on Monday, I left on Wednesday and flew back on Friday after meeting with a client, and that epiphany was about what's, what I have said and what I have, my actions over the last several months. And I just wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. My job now, very, has consumed a great deal of my, my time, for the first time in several years, actually. But my work now is seeing what's going right in communities in other places, but it's predominant, people don't bring in consultants when things are going well, they bring them in when things are going bad. So I'm constantly being asked to look for what changes need to be made, and then to look at what's going wrong and what things can be, can, can we do to fix that. And when you start to look at everything through those lenses, you tend to miss all of the great things that are going on. And I think that, and that was my, my epiphany in that conversation, that email exchange that I had with Kim, I failed to talk about it that night. And you get in this mindset, and you're just driving down the what's wrong and what's broken, and what, what can we do, and what messages do we want to get out, that we forget about all the good things. So what we had just talked about with the Wall Street Journal article and whatnot is a great example of that. But based on those things, based on what we have seen locally of two West Valley cities that have had problems, my concerns have always been in, framed in what Ronald Reagan once said was trust but verify. Staff will often say, and not just here in Goodyear, the council approved it, or it's in the budget. And councils aren't, aren't real good about having a good collective memory. Our team that we try to build is never, it's designed, it's, the electorate is designed poorly, so that we can't have discussions, and we can't until we're sitting here at the dais. I take my role very seriously, as I know everybody else here on the council does, and I'm very passionate about local government. So all of my, what I think appear to have been negative comments over the last several months are not designed to be negative at all. They're, they're really out of my passion and my care. We have a great city, we have a great staff, and I want to see it stay that way, and I want to see it stay that way into the future, and I know everybody else does too. But just to try to put it into perspective, when you look at it through the lens that I've been looking at, the last three organizations that I've had to go look at, from a very negative perspective, it changes your perspective. So, you know, my epiphany occurred, I'm going to try to make some very concerted efforts. But I wanted everyone to know that there's not a day that goes by that I don't appreciate what work that you're doing and what happens in the city, and I wanted to thank you for that. Thank you for the time.